Fourth, twenty twenty-five, meaning agenda. Staff, anything to add or edit?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to make one addition to other business, item eleven A, the voucher dispersment report. The actual report is printed out and was emailed to the council earlier today. So we're just including that report into the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Council, anything that you'd like to add to the agenda or move?
No, not seen any.
Okay.
Seeing none, I will move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote, correct, Chase?
That is correct.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. Okay. Next, let's move on to the consent agenda. Pursuant to council rules, one motion, non-debatable, will approve the recommended noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion and separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following approval of the balance of the consent agenda. Staff, is there anything that needs to change with the consent agenda?
Not tonight.
All right. Council, anything you'd like to edit in tonight's agenda?
Seeing none, I move that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Although, okay, okay, again by roll call, please signify aye or nay. Chase, you want to take it away?
Yep. Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. All right, tonight's consent agenda passes. What did we approve? Well, we approved the credit card charges and payments for June twenty twenty-five. We approved credit card charges and payments for July twenty twenty-five. We approved Robinsdale's Wine and Spirits monthly financial statements. We approved the Deputy Registrar's monthly financial statements. We approved a resolution approving of a change to the bylaws of the Robinsdale Fire Department Relief Association. We received planning committee meeting minutes for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We received and approved Planning Commission meeting minutes for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We received and approved Planning Commission meeting minutes for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. We approved credit card charges and payment for August twenty twenty-five. We approved city council meeting minutes from October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And we approved the joint powers agreement between Hennepin County and the City of Robinsdale and the Three Rivers Park District. Next, we have presentations.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. What we have on your agenda here, item A, is Robinsdale proclaims Saturday, November twenty-ninth, Small Business Saturday. This is something that the cities participated the last several years through Hennepin County. Most recently, the Hennepin County Elevate Program has been good about doing these types of proclamations where we really stress the importance of things like shopping local. Nationally, the twenty-ninth, that weekend of Thanksgiving, has been observed as that Small Business Saturday. And you can see in the proclamation that we put here before you, for consideration, call some of those things out. Staff, of course, is always happy to respond to questions, comments, or concerns. But I know this is one that council also likes to share some recognition and appreciation for.
Fantastic. Council, anything to comment, questions? Mia, okay, Councilmember White, Parisian?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, overall, want to say thank you to staff for helping to put this together. Very happy to support this and very proud that we have such a great collection of small businesses here in Robinsdale, not just in our downtown district, but throughout the city as well. And I will encourage everyone to get out on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, to support these businesses, not just the shops downtown, but also visiting local restaurants, cafes, things like that. It looks like the forecast is going to be a little bit chilly, so you're going to want to be inside anyway, doing some shopping on Small Business Saturday. So again, happy to support this.
Fantastic. Anybody else, council? Okay, well, yeah, great comments, Mia, I echo the same. Love our Robinsdale businesses all throughout the city and please come make a day of it on the twenty-ninth, on Small Business Saturday, and really any day. So, thank you all. All right, doesn't look like there's anything to approve here, Tim, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Council, no formal actions required on this. We'll continue to promote through our communication channels as usual.
Excellent, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public hearings, and there are none, so let's move on to old business. Chauvin Avenue Trunk Drainage Project, seven-three-two-two-five, a change order.
Good evening, Mr. Remote Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
This, this report is one of those times it's a bit challenging and a bit difficult. So I'm asking the council to allocate a lot of money. You'd be familiar with this particular project. It's the one to run the main drains through Sanborn Park from about the intersection of Forty-third and Chauvin down towards Shoreline Drive to a structure down there where, when the Shoreline-Chauvin project is done, they will connect to that downstream structure and run those pipes into the lake. So as the contractor was preparing to start work on this, they went out and they dug a couple of test pits just to verify conditions and what have you. And lo and behold, they came across what appears to be an old rubbish tip. So I've got some photos here to show some of the materials that they have pulled out of that area. They dug down to about the fifteen feet where the pipe will be laid. Is this thing on? Yeah? Excuse me while I get this figured out. Then, oh, does it automatically, look at that, wow. We'll zoom out. So these are the, they dug three kind of holes like this, about fifteen feet. They had the big excavators out there just chewing away at the, at the ground there to see what they find. You can see the different color of strata as you go down there. This one here shows a bunch of bottles as they're digging down. This photo here shows some of the miscellaneous debris that they've pulled out, bottles, bits of wood, bits of clay tile pipe, bits of metal, all sorts of interesting stuff. Couple of other photos, so this is the hole that they dug down by the southern end. You can see there, there's bits of, well, all sorts of stuff from that hole that they found. And then this final picture, again, shows the nature of some of the material that they've pulled out, some old granite chunks, lots of friable material, timber, they found old bits of corrugated metal pipe that have been crushed up and thrown in the hole and what have you. The upshot of all of this is that the foundation material for these pipes, as specified in our plans, is not going to be enough to support the pipes, purely and simply. So they've, they've looked at this and the contractor has suggested that we lay the pipes on effectively an aggregate raft. And that aggregate raft is a bunch of rock that's wrapped in a geotextile, so it doesn't sink or go anywhere. And that is what would support the pipes. Now, the pipes that we chose are lighter weight pipes, but they're going to be full of water because the grade that they're at is generally below lake level. So normally, before we start these projects, we do soil borings, and we did soil borings down here. And, you know, at the depths, we were planning on putting the pipes. It wasn't fantastic sandy soil, but it seemed like it was going to be okay. There wasn't a hint there was going to be this much garbage in that park. So we find ourselves in a difficult situation that, in order to proceed with the project as it's currently proposed, we have to amend the foundations that those pipes are sitting on to something that will support them better. If we just proceed with the work as specified, those pipes will start to sink into this stuff. We'll end up with bellies in the pipe that will hold water and won't let it flow out. The grades here are already fairly minimal. But if we let the pipe sink too much, we'll end up with what we had on that forty-three, forty-four hundred block of Chauvin where the large pipe was effectively up and down and just couldn't handle any water at all. And we know the flooding that resulted from any sort of rainstorm in that part of town. So having looked at, I can show you a copy of what they're proposing to, that might be of assistance here. So effectively, for the, this is going to be on all parts of the, of the work. So there's the raft that the pipes sit on, and those heavy black lines are geotextiles. And those geotextiles keep all the stuff together. We actually did something like this in that other part of Chauvin Avenue. We had the part that was built on piles, because that soil was even worse than this. And then as we started to come out of that really poor soil, we actually built a raft like this for those pipes to sit on as it neared Sanborn Park. So this would just be a continuation of that foundation. As I said, something like this does not come cheap. The amount of additional excavation, plus the replacement of that volume with rock material, wrapping it in geotextile and what have you. The estimated cost from the contractor, if I can find it in my, the estimated cost for that work is about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, that's not a small sum of money. So when we heard about this, we thought, okay, what other options do we have? Those options are listed in the report. Moving the pipe further towards Chauvin Avenue, so moving it to the east, might solve the problem. I think it will still have to cross areas of poor soil. So you'll still have an issue where we need to provide additional support underneath. The other thing is, it may require additional structures. And if you recall from the original bid, the structures were a very expensive element of that, that bid. And it may also have impacts, well, will have impact of the hydraulics of the pipe. Now you're in, putting in more bends. That high volume of water has more difficulty getting around those bends. So effectively, you impact the capacity of the system. Another option we looked at was, what if we go to the complete other side of the park, run it down the western side of the park? We don't have any soil borings in that, that part of the park. At some stage there, it must go from that rubbish soil into something a bit better. However, going down that side of the park will basically take out everything. It will take out the ball field, it will take out the playground, it will take out the tennis courts, take all of that out just to run it down that side of the park. Again, we might need some more structures, and the additional bends will also have an impact on the hydraulics. And it is also likely that we will encounter some of the bad soil going that way as well. And then the third option is to maintain the existing alignment, but put the pipe on piles like we did further up on Chauvin Avenue. That would cost millions, so we're not recommending that. Of course, the other option is, we decide, okay, we're going to cut our losses and back out of the contract and try and figure out another way to do it. Well, I don't know that we're going to be able to figure out another way to do it. We've got to run the pipe there somewhere. If, if there was an alternate to run it somewhere else, we would have looked at that, but there's really, really no alternative. If the city council wanted to consider backing out of the contract, I'd have to contact the city attorney and just see what, what goes on there. We would have to pay the cost of the pipes that have just started to arrive on site and the contractor's time for doing work up to now. And then we'll still be in the same position we are now. We've got to still put pipes in the ground and get them down to the lake somehow. Another part of that, that change order is, when we were preparing the plans, we omitted a lateral connection from the new pipe to where the Crystal Lake Storm Silve lift station is. That additional cost is only about thirty thousand dollars, which seems pretty minimal compared to the other one. So overall, the, the change order is in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand dollars and some change. I'm actually asking that city council amend this to seven hundred and fifty thousand because I'm not sure I can get rid of all that mucky soil back in the hole. What they will do is, they will dig down to where they have to, they will lay that aggregate, they will place the pipes on that, and they'll backfill around those pipes. But then between that and some distance toward the surface, they can put all that stuff back in the hole. But they may not be able to get it all in the hole. So that stuff would have to go somewhere else. So I'm just trying to anticipate, so I don't have to come back again and ask you for more money because we didn't anticipate something. So in terms of funding, the original project was awarded about two point seven million dollars. Adding the change order to this would bring it up to about three, just under three point five. The recent bonding that was carried out included three point one million for this project. So that leaves a balance of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that would have to be funded from other sources. We have been in dialogue with the finance director, and he does advise that the Stormsuit Utility Enterprise Fund can sustain that additional balance. So while, while this is a kind of a bit of a gut punch, I think it is the best option for the, the location of the, of the pipe, especially when you consider that when we start to do work in Chauvin Avenue, I have to get like a twenty-seven inch sanitary sewer pipe, plus other storm sewer, plus an eight inch water main into that right of way. So I think if I push two sixty inch pipes too far across to that, that area, I think it would be extremely challenging. This particular route is also the most direct route to get it to the lake. So from a hydraulic perspective, that's a good thing. So, you know, just, just to take in mind that, right now, there is a fifty-four inch pipe in there, and we're replacing that with two sixty inch pipes. So that's how undersized the current system is. So anything we can do to maintain that capacity is, is a good thing. So whilst this amount is quite substantial, I think it's the best option we have available. And it is an unfortunate legacy of actions that were taken many decades ago with what they put in that park. And at this stage, as your engineer, I am recommending approval of this change order.
Is there more, Richard, sorry?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council, any questions, comments, concerns?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Greenberg?
Thank you. Thank you for the, the presentation and analyzing kind of the, the different options. I know this is no fun, and as I'm thinking through this, I recognize that this is going to sound, in some ways, critical, but it's not directed at you. I recognize that these are also very complicated projects. But just knowing, I mean, anecdotally, what is underneath Sanborn Park and has been, and also the acknowledgement that, you know, coming out of the project on Chauvin between forty-third and forty-fourth, that, that that was required, I feel like there's an element of, like, this kind of puts us in a tough space. I know you did borings, you did everything you could. It's, it isn't a lack of effort, or, again, this is very complicated, and you're covering a lot of ground, and there's different spots of this stuff, and, but it does seem reasonable to think that there would be this type of material in Sanborn Park, again, just knowing what I know. So, I mean, given all the options, I don't know that we have a lot of other choices. But I think had this, had we figured this out sooner and had been part of the overall bonding, that would have been a better... I, it, at the end of the day, I guess it's just disappointing, but it's not aimed at our engineering department. It's more of just an acknowledgement of that. We're talking budgets right now, dollars are very tight. I understand you take into account that, you know, that's why the bonding is larger than... We're talking budgets right now. Dollars are very tight. I understand you take into account that, you know, that's why the bonding is larger than the exact amount of what you were estimating because you there's things like this happen. But um I feel like there's an element that seems reasonable that it could have been there. Again, you did the borings. I I don't know what else, like, there's no expectation that you would have done something different. And maybe that's the question. Are there other ways that you could have discovered these materials, just given what you ran into in the previous project? Or is it?
Yeah, Councilmember Greenberg, good point. I mean, we we would have had to go out and dig the test pits ourselves.
Yeah.
The other thing that that perplexes me is the depth that that material is at is below the lake level.
Mm-hmm.
Which I would not have anticipated debris like that to be at or below lake level.
Okay.
Hmm. Because those pipes are significantly below lake level. So the the expectation to be encountering that stuff at that depth was um, you know, didn't compute.
Sure. So I and and I appreciate that explanation. Again, it's like I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. And I just know that these are big and complex projects. Um, the one other thing that I guess I'm thinking of is that like just given where we're at as far as like projects that reuse old materials and things that have been petrified underwater for you know, I, in the pictures, you showed there was like a a liquor bottle, some sort of glass bottle. I guess in my mind, I know it's not going to offset this project by any stretch, but is there any way to save any of that material to make available that we could recoup? You know, it's like, hey, if this bottle's worth a thousand dollars, I know it doesn't change the predicament that we're in, but you know, if there's ten of those and 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 again, I don't even know if that's feasible, but I guess it's just something again, trying to be creative, but thinking about it, could we make use of whatever's under there? I mean, unique bricks, old bricks, old bits of rock that maybe would be valuable in some project? I don't know.
Boy, I've I've never really considered something like that. I will tell you that the operator who was in the excavator digging those test pits did fish out a couple of bottles for himself. Now, um, it it's remarkable that any of those bottles are still intact.
I mean, that's kind of the point. I mean, those are decades old bottles.
I'm sure they are. Um, I I'm not quite sure how we would achieve that. You'd you'd virtually have to scoop out bottles and lay them aside and have somebody go through them. I I don't know of anybody who's an expert in valuing old bottles.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council, if I may jump in, I I I think it's a a good way of thinking creatively. Um, what you're talking about initially is uh accruing additional cost on speculation.
Yeah.
Um, bringing staff out. A a vast majority of what's been dug up is refuse. Um, it's all trash. Like you, like you say, we knew that there was, this was a dumping site. Um, this was common practice, unfortunately, in a number of areas. Um, I think we can certainly kick the tires on it i- if there might be um even a small value to doing that. Um, but it it does become expensive and Richard can speak more to this than I. It does become expensive uh removing staging, sifting, sorting, moving again. Um, all that comes with a cost. We've got limited space, but we'd be happy to go back and kick the tires on the idea.
Yeah, I think I think the north area might be more apt to to pulling out larger volumes of uh bottles than the southern areas where it was more just absolute rubbish.
Okay.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Richard. Um, thank you, Councilmember Greenberg, for those uh sentiments. I was thinking along the same lines and I appreciate that you asked that question of like looking in hindsight because I had the same question, but um, given your answer, now I have a new question. Not knowing much about this aggregate raft approach. In your expertise, do you foresee any risks with that approach, given the large cost associated with it?
Uh, Councilmember, in in terms of risks, what what do you mean?
Risks in term of, in terms of any um additional hiccups or like incurred costs that would come about of other things that we might not be able to foresee.
Boy, I I I wish one of those glass elements in the hole was a a glass ball that I could tell the future in. Um, I'm just trying to recall back to the Chowan Avenue project where we, you know, had to do major soil corrections and whether there were any additional hiccups or cost incursions as we went along after we settled on the solution. And I don't recall that there were any major dramas after we decided this is the way we're going to approach it. Now, I can't stand here and guarantee that that's the case, but I think we have considered most of what the problems are. And I can't tell any other, you know, apart from the the disposal of the rubbish, I can anticipate that could be an issue. Other than that, I I cannot foresee anything dramatic at this stage.
Um, and again, not knowing much about aggregate rafts whatsoever. Um, do these exist elsewhere in the city and is it like a common, is it a pretty common practice?
Right right now, no, but we do have that section just north of Sanborn Park that we did as part of the Chowan Avenue project.
Okay.
We sat the, we had two forty-eight inch pipes sitting on that. And it seems to be working quite well.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, uh, I'll just as a follow-up comment, it is um it does make for a complicated decision process, but really do appreciate you being able to share the expertise from an engineering perspective and then also offering an analysis of other solutions and from where from my standpoint, I think about what's the risk of not moving forward with this? And I do believe that the risk is too great not to um continue with this, but it is important to ask some of these important questions along the way.
Definitely. And I I think one thing we've learned out of this is for the shoreline drive project
Hmm.
and going up that, even that first section of Grimes Avenue, part of the the bu- or part of the uh bid tabs will include constructing a raft just in case. Because at this stage, we're not sure that, because that some of the proposed sanitary in Grimes Avenue is going to be really deep. It may not have garbage, but it may have rubbish soil. So we're we're just trying to anticipate having learned from this what we could encounter. And I think as as a city reconstruction, we get into especially the forty-two hundred block of Grimes, that's got awful soil too. So, you know, we'll do better at anticipating times when we're likely to come across old sloughs or or old garbage dumps or whatever it might be.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions, council? Yes, Councilmember Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Richard. Um, I guess I'm a little bit interested in some of the more uh technical sides of this, kind of just following up what Councilmember Parisian was leading into. Uh, I'm curious, the can the depth of this be changed? Like, can it go deeper, shallower to get you know, a a place where it can be more stable? And then also, is there an option to like dig past this refuse? And then kind of backfill and create a bed that is suitable for the uh the drain?
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner, uh, to answer the first question, we can't, we're kind of stuck with where the pipe is. Uh, we're limited with the upstream grade where we have to connect. And then, I mean, we we could put the pipe at this, at the Lakeland halfway to China, but it's not going to be very effective. You know, we've got to try and maintain some grade and and take into account lake level and what have you. I mean, the the final grade of the pipe coming out into the lake is below the lake. But if it's too far below the lake, the water won't flow because of the force of the water, the backflow. So we have to balance that. In terms of your second question about can we overexcavate and fill that material in, I I think you would end up with a similar price to do that as we have before us now. Um, I I don't think it would be a case of just taking out a couple of feet and and putting stuff back. I think we would have to dig quite a long way underneath the pipes to replace it with more suitable material and that additional excavation together with the cost of putting the suitable rock back in to provide that bed, I think would soon outdo the cost of what we have before us.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Um, and I guess maybe just you've already answered this question, but it may obviously leave it as a general comment if if um yeah, if there's any way we could keep the trash from going back into the ground, that would be great. Um, but I know the cost is um limiting factor here and it will be buried and a lot of it seems like.
It's it seems fairly inert.
Yeah, inert, okay.
Yeah, if if it's inert, it's okay to go back in the ground. Um, and and this might sound mean, but you know, a lot of parks, not only um around this area, but around the country, around the world, are are old dumping grounds for stuff. Um, and having having a park with with stuff like that underneath, as long as it's not nasty stuff is all right. You know, if you've got nasty stuff, you shouldn't be putting that back in the ground. You know, it's the stuff that can be be dangerous and what have you, but you know, there's been cases um even in this city where there's some stuff under the ground that's a bit hot. And as long as you meet PCA requirements about how much cover you put over the top of it, it's still okay as a park.
Gotcha. Okay, no, that's great. Um, that's good to hear that that's kind of what we're dealing with. And then I guess just to leave with my general thoughts on this, yeah, it's um a gut punch as you described. And I'm I think I'm going to go along with my other uh colleagues here and their um rationale and kind of not not so much reluctantly su- support this, but just kind of with that cautionary of view of the future and the risks and benefits of delaying it, but also let's try to learn from this. That would be, I guess, my ask um with my approval. So, but thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the um not, you know, trying to um beat around the bush, uh just being very straightforward with with uh with what's going on. So I also appreciate that transparency.
I'll be brief because I think a lot was said. Thank you. Uh, a lot was said already, so I'll be very brief. Um, and more so, I think, going back to your idea, um, Councilmember Greenberg, and thinking about um, this sounds like a potential community project. I'm not sure what the that would look like, but it just sounds like an opportunity if we're talking about salvaging and and finding ways in which we can potentially pull some things out and not put things back into the into the earth, like, that'd be awesome. So just something to consider as we're IDing here and I just appreciate you thinking that way and all the sentiments and what you have stated already so much so far. Um, it's appreciated. And like I said, the straightforwardness and thoroughness of this report is always really helpful. Um, and yeah, unfortunate that sometimes we can't foresee everything. And I think just the ability to come back and be intentional with the next steps is really helpful. So thank you for that.
Um, I have a, I do have a question and uh forgive my ignorance and I should have looked this up before our meeting, but it just dawned on me as we're as we're speaking. And I think back to the work session where we had the master parks plan up on the wall and the price tag for all the different sections of the plan. Is there a wor- is there a world that exists where some of that offsets this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, I'll jump in and take that one. Um, what Richard and I concur has proposed here utilizes uh some of our our funds specific to stormwater.
Yep.
As has been noted, the the funding that goes um towards bonding, of course, that's that servicing um in eventually a large part um reflected through collection and the levy, but um this additional fund, um the the additional funds coming from the storm specific are are for jobs like this. Um, there there could be down the road, um if this were to be approved, down the road, if we were looking at replenishing some of those funding sources, uh including water. Um, that that'd be ha- that'd be an action that council would have to take and we can certainly do as a part of review when we talk about utility billing here in the next week or two. But at this point, uh, as proposed, I would support uh Mr. McCoy's proposal with the funding as we've described here.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for cleaning that uh question up because that's essentially where my head was going. Uh, well, that's good to know. We can, we can definitely cross that bridge when we get there. And then, you know, Richard, uh, over the weekend, I ran into the mayor of Lake Elmo, who I believe knows you from the public works uh world and uh had nothing but great things to say about you. And I know you've you carry a great reputation, not only in the city, but also amongst your peers uh here throughout the metro and I think actually throughout the country. So um, I I know, I know you you do good work and this is just one of those things that snuck up on us and I think if you knew about it ahead of time, you would have done something about it. So uh, thank you for the good work that you do and and uh, you know, your your continued guidance as our North Star here in engineering. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have to go up and look up who the uh the mayor of Lake Elmo is now.
Yeah, I wish I could remember his name, so I could tell you. All right, well, um, if there's nothing else, uh, do we have a a couple of motions here?
I'll make a motion to authorize a change order to project seven-three-two-two-five consisting of provision of a supporting aggregate raft and the provision of additional forty lineal feet of thirty-foot pipe work to service the storm lift station for an increase of up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of this only motion on this topic, uh, please signify by saying aye or nay. If you're not in favor, it'll be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackman?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. All right. That passes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
All right, on to new business, Energy Action Plan Addendum.
Can everyone see the slides?
Mm-hmm.
Including the mayor.
He gave you.
Okay. Okay, um, good evening. My name is Kayla Kurtz. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator here for the city of Robinsdale. And I am just going to introduce my colleague Ladette from Partners in Energy. Um, we have been working with Partners in Energy since twenty-twenty-two when we began working on the Robinsdale Energy Action Plan. We adopted that plan in twenty-twenty-three and we've had a lot of success in implementing the Energy Action Plan and um tonight we are just looking to get the council's formal formal approval for an addendum to the Energy Action Plan that really just looks to um continue to beef up our energy action efforts. Um, so I will pass it over to my colleague Ladette to um present the addendum.
Thank you, Kayla. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Kayla mentioned, my name is Ladette Bayou. I'm a community facilitator for Excel Energy's Partners in Energy program. And I've been working with the city of Robinsdale to prepare this plan. Uh, we're very excited for the opportunity to share this addendum for the council's approval. So as um Kayla mentioned, Robinsdale is not new to working with Partners in Energy. Um, the original Energy Action Plan was completed in uh January of this year, twenty-twenty-five, and um, the second round of planning began right after in February of twenty-twenty-five. Um, and thereafter, we've moved into the development and review of the addendum plan that is before you today. So as you can see, this is a rough timeline of where we've been and where we're headed in terms of this addendum. So you all have access now to an updated version of the energy action, Energy Action Plan Addendum document. And this really serves as a roadmap towards Robinsdale's energy future and it's a forty-page document containing all the details and ideas developed through, uh, planning and workshops with Robinsdale's Energy Action Team. And in it, you'll find an executive summary, uh, that is seen here on the screen before you. Uh, Robinsdale baseline data, focus areas and target metrics, strategies and breakdowns, a work plan and timeline for the plan, as well as beneficial electrification and electric vehicle introductory guides. So how we got to this point, the content of this plan was all developed through workshops and surveys conducted this past summer. And we want to acknowledge all the residents and community stakeholders that volunteered their time and energy towards this final product. These workshops included conversations and brainstorming with original action team members, city staff, XL Energy representatives, Centerpoint Energy representatives and Hennepin County representatives, um, who were present to help answer questions about programs and broader utility goals. So this plan, this planning phase introduces two new focus areas to the original plan, which are beneficial electrification and electric vehicles. The plan outlines a total of twelve new strategies for action and listed here are some high-level strategies that we're excited to get started on during implementation, such as the creation of a library checkout program for specific electric appliances like an induction stove top, um, or campaigns to communicate available EV rebates and electric rate-saving opportunities. Um, in, and in Robinsdale's original Energy Action Plan, four focus areas were identified being reducing energy burden, residential energy efficiency, business energy efficiency, and renewable energy. And Partners in Energy is also going to support in the continued implementation of these strategies over the next eighteen to twenty months. So throughout the first phase of implementation, Robinsdale has seen many successes, um, while working with us um, and collaborating with Partners in Energy. Um, some highlights are establishing a volunteer-based sustainability committee to support city energy strategies. Um, and some of these members were actually represented in our Energy Action Team during the planning phase. Um, we've established free home energy squad visits for all Robinsdale residents and coordinated, uh, business splits for door-to-door outreach, encouraging lighting assessments for downtown Robinsdale businesses. So we are so confident that this re-engagement will lead to Robinsdale to even more energy wins. And Partners in Energy is here to help to attack these strategies as a capacity builder for your staff and city. Um, some of the scopes of support that we bring to the table for Robinsdale is joint marketing, energy expertise, education and outreach, project management and tracking and reporting. Um, the prepared memorandum of understanding that we've also provided for you today further outlines the support and responsibilities that Partners in Energy and the city of Robinsdale will share in for the implementation of this EV and BE plan. So what's next for Robinsdale and Partners in Energy? Um, following the approval of this plan and signing of the MOU, we'll move into preparation for a press release and implementation kickoff in January of twenty twenty-six. And we're excited for this continuation of our collaboration with the city. Thank you.
Uh, council, any questions?
Sure.
Councilmember Wagner?
Thank you. Um, yeah, we got a similar presentation, um, at a work session, so thank you for coming back. Thank you for your work on this. I, I'm glad that we're putting more thought into this and adjusting things and growing this program. I've also been, kind of the other piece of this too, that is really important to me is that we have a community engagement with this and it's a really kind of direct and um, meaningful way for residents to get involved with, with city policy and city, um, visioning. So I just wanna, you know, thank XL and thank our Sustainability Coordinator Kayla for, um, putting all of this together and putting so much time and effort into this. So, yeah, I, I can't wait to see what, how this program grows and continues to, um, benefit our community.
Thank you, council member.
Any comments? Yep, Councilmember Blackledge?
Yeah, I'll echo those sentiments and then also this add-in. Uh, what really excites me is about the education piece. Because I think, like I said, part of it is we can't make changes or continue to be mindful around how we're showing up as a community if we don't know. And so I'm really excited about, um, what that will look like and how we continue to invite community into that conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation and agreed, I think we had, um, a wonderful presentation at the work session a few weeks ago and a really good discussion then. I am very happy to support, um, the recommendations tonight. And in addition, I wanted to also thank XL Energy. In, in the memorandum of understanding, there are outline, um, expectations from both what XL is providing to the city and then also what the city is providing to XL and, um, we would not be able to achieve this level of success without, uh, support from XL. So I wanted to, um, state that. And it, again, I've, I've said this, uh, several times before, but it's been really wonderful to see the growth of this program from the very beginning and to see even tangible things, um, today when, you know, we're seeing a new, uh, EV charging station at Lakeview Terrace that's about to go online. Um, we've got more coming to City Hall and those are just real, um, real wins that we get to see and benefit from in our community as a result of programs like this. So, thank you for the presentation. Thank you again to Kayla for all of your work in liaising through this program. And I'm happy to support this.
Excellent. Councilmember Greenberg?
Yep, so, uh, everyone, uh, had great things to say and I agree wholeheartedly. Um, the one other thing that I will add is just, um, you know, from a community standpoint, not just the Sustainability Committee, but our residents actually engaging and actually taking advantage of these things. So I've heard a lot of excitement around the, um, the energy audits and learning about how to make their homes more efficient and things they can take advantage of. And so while it's, it's great to see that we have, uh, you know, a group of, of residents that can be involved and have their voice heard within, um, city policy and things like that, it's also great that the residents are seeing value and getting, um, recognizing value from this program. So with all of that, um, thank you for the presentation and, uh, thanks for all the hard work from staff and our partners.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, uh, great presentations. Uh, looks like, you know, you guys are tracking nicely towards goals and, um, you know, again, I participated in the energy audit and found it to be excellent and you know, cruised by Lakeview Terrace and saw the EV charger there. That was pretty cool. And so I, uh, you know, nice job. So. Alright, um, now we have a couple of them, that's right, to, uh, to make. So, anyone want to make a motion?
I will to adopt the Beneficial Electrification and Electric Vehicle Action Plan Addendum.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor by saying, uh, aye or nay if you're not, roll call.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye.
Right, there's another motion to make here.
Yep, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-five to twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven amendment, um, um, addendum, Implementation Support Memorandum of Understanding with XL Energy.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye, or if you're not, nay, uh, by a roll call vote. Please, Chase.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
And Mayor Black, uh, Mayor Sutton?
Uh, aye.
Sorry about that.
Alright, that passes. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Uh, first reading for an ordinance amendment to city code section retaining, relating to the domestic animal permit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting set up right now. Sloth. There we go. So, this is a zoning text amendment to the Robinsdale Domestic Animal Permit. And this will be the first reading. I'm hoping to get done with you tonight. So, for the actual request, um, we're hoping to allow the inclusion of quail within the domestic animal permit. Currently, we have two domestic animal permits, a chicken hen permit and then a domestic animal. Our domestic animal permit allows chickens, ducks, geese, turkeys and rabbits. But unfortunately, at this time, we don't have any inclusion of quail. So any resident coming forward hoping to have some, we'd unfortunately say that's not allowed code. So we're hoping to change that tonight. So residents in the city can have quails on the property. I'll give you a little bit of background about quail. So quails are small birds, typically have short tails, rounded wings, compact bodies, and they're usually around the range in size of four to seven inches and weigh about three to seven ounces. So it is not a hefty bird at all. Um, they're often brown, gray or spredled to provide camouflage in grasslands and shrubs. And generally, in most areas, we, we find that they are smaller than a regular-sized chicken. Um, as we were going down the ordinance and looking this over for including them, the big thing we wanted to see is what was, how noisy they are. They're gonna be outside next to other neighbors. Are they gonna be an issue? Are they gonna potentially break our noise ordinance? Because that was a large reason why we don't have roosters right now in the city is because a lot of the noise and a lot of neighbors just didn't like that. Through our research, staff found out that male, male quails rarely crow unlike roosters. And when they do, it's usually when they're separated from their other friends and they're usually alone and they're just being kind of anxious. So we see that they kind of almost crow. It's not loud and distinct like the actual crow of a rooster, but it's more shrill and we found in other cities where they have them, it's not really an issue that other residents or other cities kind of see themselves dealing with. So the actual background of the code we're hoping to change is we're hoping to add in one word and a comma. So we're hoping that right there, I bold and underline what we're heading to open or put into, uh, code. And this would be into section nine seventeen dot three, seven, the domestic animal and the domestic animal permit. So any person deciding to have more than two ducks, geese, quails, turkeys or rabbits must obtain a permit for the city council. Uh, so what this means is if someone wanted to have two or less quail, it wouldn't be something that city staff would wanna register, like with a two ducks, two geese, two chickens. But let's say someone wants to have ten or more, it would be a standard permit that we do, similar with chickens and hens in the city. So it'd just be a standard process that you've already seen in the past. Uh, the reason we're bringing up is because the applicants who are with us tonight, um, they are hoping to have quails at their property. I kind of gave an aerial vision of where they want to have it and the property in general. It's at forty-five hundred Orchard Avenue North. They're hoping to have a coop in their rear yard. It's gonna be about nine and a half to five square feet. So it's gonna be meeting size requirements. It's gonna be meeting setback requirements from the side yard. And since it's gonna be in the rear yard, the coop's not something we're hoping to see any code enforcement or any type of neighbor dispute rise up about. I kind of gave a visual there of what you might see their coop and instead of chickens, they'll be seeing quails inside of there. This did go to the Planning Commission on our regular meeting on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. A public hearing was held. Um, no one in the audience stepped forward. A notice of this public hearing was also posted in the city's official newspaper ten days prior. And then we also put it onto the bulletin board as well for any residents to see coming in and out of City Hall. And again, I, we did not receive any comments from the public. Actually, I already take that back. I did receive one phone call from a resident in support of this ordinance. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance without any other added conditions. I did put in a sample motion there as well and I am available for any questions and the applicants tonight are available as well in case you have any questions for them.
Okay. Uh, council, any comments, questions?
Not really.
Pretty straightforward.
I'll, can I make a motion?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I, I find it entertaining that we're worried about noise when turkeys are somehow in the mix. Is that, are turkeys not noisy?
They are. I find they are.
Okay. Alright. Well, they're there and, uh, I, I've got no issues with, with the quails. I think it's great. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, Jason.
No, you're good.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to recommend draft the draft ordinance amendment.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, or if you're opposed, say nay. Chase, please commence with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. Alright, welcome to the quail business. Alright. Uh, next, under new business here, we have the first reading for an ordinance amendment to allow event centers as conditional use in the B four districts.
Yes, I will go again. Perfect. So again, this is gonna be another first reading for a zoning text amendment ordinance change that we'd like to see included in the city code. And the text amendment tonight is going to be in concern with adding event centers as a conditional use into the B four zoning district. So just to give a little background of why we're proposing this tonight is because in September this year, city staff represented with a proposal to establish an event center at forty-one thirty Lakeland Avenue North, a B four zoning district. And this was the former location of Jungle Boogie and then Standpoint Event Center as well. Currently, the city zoning code does not specifically address, uh, address event centers at all. It's not within the permitted uses, accessory uses or conditionals. And as the B four zoning district, we would also allow all uses in the B one, the B two and B three. As well stated, I didn't see any mention of event centers in any of those districts. So if someone were gonna come forward today asking to, uh, hold an event center, we would probably say it's not allowed because we don't state it. Um, however, city staff believe that an event center is compatible use within the goals vision outlined in the comprehensive plan for the B four Community Business Zoning District. So we're hoping propose as a conditional use tonight. And as a conditional use, with that would mean anyone hoping to have this use would have to come forward with a condition use permit. It would need to have a public hearing through the Planning Commission and would have a recommendation of approval or denial. And then would have to have city council approval or denial to have it authorized or not. So that's the proposed, what we're having tonight and set up just outright permitted. So, and I actually hit a lot of these points already. So as for the B four zoning district, city staff found that this would be our probably best district to have such a use in, since event centers usually have large volumes of people. These can either be through music events or a wedding venue where you might see large crowds or large portions of people gathering where we need additional parking space. Um, so far in the city, there's only two real locations where we see the B four district, Hy-Vee, and then would also be our downtown zoning area as well, where we have large areas of parking already available. Um, the B one, the B two and the B three, we found too restrictive for such a use. So we're proposing at the B four tonight. Luckily, the forty-one thirty Lakeland Avenue North where event center or standpoint in Jungle Boogie is already a B four district. And as we've kind of seen as defined use, what we've seen in other cities, other cities define si- event center as venues designed to host large And as we've kind of seen as defined use, what we've seen in other cities, other cities define si- event center as venues designed to host large gatherings typically involving food, beverages, and entertainment requiring substantial space and parking. Again, the B-four would probably be the best area for such a use. So again, we kinda wanna see where we would see that, and as I stated, up here, uh, where the red circle is, that is gonna be where Standpoint Event Center and Jungle Boogie were. The dark crimson red color, that's gonna be shown as our B-four zoning district. And again, there's only two places where we're seeing this. Technically, there's three with the auto shops on the northern side along Lake Drive. But we're not hoping to see any changes in that reas- in any time soon. So we're seeing it down into the Hy-Vee area and then the downtown section as well. So all this word and verbiage right in front of you, these are all actually the conditional uses stated outlined in the B-four zoning district. The only changes we're hoping to put tonight are actually bolded and underlined, and they're at the very bottom in G, event centers. That's the only change we're hoping to include within the conditional uses, so as stated before, anyone coming forward will have to go through the condition use permit process. So as with the quails, a public hearing notice was published in the city's official newspaper, and a notice about hearing was posted in the city's bulletin board for the October twenty-second planning commission meeting. That public hearing was opened and closed with no comments made by this, uh, made by the public. Um, the pa- planning commission did recommend approval of this ordinance without any other conditions involved. And I did include a sample motion right there for you tonight, and I'm willing to answer any questions available.
Council, any, uh, any questions, comments, or motions? Councilmember Wagner?
Thank you, um, can you just refresh my memory on the conditional use permit application process? I think you touched on a couple of them, are there site visits, are there qualifiers when it comes to alcohol or food or anything like that? If, you know, this event center, um, wanted to do, host those things or cater those things? Is there a distinction also between catering and doing it yourself as part of the CUP?
Yeah, I'll gladly go through each of those. So to start with, the condition use permit process involve applicants coming forward to the city, looking through our conditional uses approved in city code already. And then they'd have to pay an application fee, they'd have to give us a site plan showing us what they're doing, they'd have to give us a description, and then also a letter kind of detailing, what are you hoping to do, you'd probably say event center, they'd go into schematic saying, what is it, what's involved, what's the hours of operation, staff? And then how many people do you expect on the nightly day? We would then take that permit, we'd do a staff review, if it seemed good, we'd give them a letter of rec- or a letter of acceptance, and then prepare to get ready for a planning commission meeting. We'd send out a public hearing notice, first day at law, through the newspaper, and then also put it on the board. We'd have planning commission go over, and we'd be looking over, like you said, parking requirements for the use, we'd be looking over noise standards for such a use. Is it a potential hazard? And would actually, for any condition use permit in the city, there's actually findings of facts that go over in city code already. Is it gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood area, is compliant with our comprehensive plan, is it gonna be compliant with our neighborhood and surrounding areas? So we'd go through each of these in detail. This zoning text amendment tonight would just state that they're allowed to even apply for a condition use permit. Any event center that would come into the future would still have to go through this process, they'd have to get a recommendation through the planning commission, and then eventually they would have to get approval from the city council. You did make a point on any type of liquor licensing or anything like that, that would still need to be a license pulled through the city for any liquor licensing, and any, um, pulling through that would have to be through staff review as well. Um, that is aside from the condition use permit that they'll have to pro- um, apply for anyway. But through this zoning text amendment, we would just say you need to at least have your entire project explained to the city council and to planning commission, and then you can make the determination if you'd want to approve or deny such a use.
Wonderful, fantastic, that was, um, very thorough, Will. Um, yeah, knowing that, I think I'm very comfortable approving this, and I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, so, I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I, oh.
I had, I guess I had one question, just the, I know we're adding the language specifically for, uh, event centers and just looking at what's bolded versus what isn't. I know there's all, the whole list in the conditional use piece, but is there anything that specifically defines the event center? I, and maybe I'm just missing it, but, like, what would, what's the difference between an event center and a restaurant, and, you know, like, as far as, as a conditional use, like? I mean, there's all these rules in here, but those rules are already in the conditional use, so what, we're, we're adding event center, but what specifically makes it an event center? I guess is the one thing that I would wanna make sure is clear.
Let me just make sure I'm kinda understanding, you're wondering if there's actually gonna be a defined definition of events that are also within codes, that way as we go forward, we'd be able to look at that definition, be like, this is what we consider an event center beside like a bar or like a restaurant.
Yes.
So through staff, it would kind of be through staff interpretation as well, and I'm gonna go back in a couple slides here. And it was kind of defined as how we see it as a large host of gatherings, food, beverages, entertainment as well. Now, if you're wondering if that's actually gonna be included in code at this time as well with this zoning text, we haven't included that. It's kind of gonna be seen through staff interpretation when we get applications, and we'd be able to make that interpretation of, you know, you're gonna be a bar, you don't need to go through this, you can go through the little regular permitting process for like a Buffalo Wild Wings, while like a wedding venue or even Jungle Boogie, you kind of see that as more areas of large gatherings of people where you might wanna have additional review for, it's gonna be meeting noise components. Um, it specifically also for traffic as well, because in the transit overlay district where we see our B-four zoning districts, we actually see two different categories of parking standards for, and it's actually seen as service, printing, studio, and I also believe service, while food is actually seen as a different category, and these two categories have different parking standards. While the restaurant sees as table seating areas, and the amount of chairs per restaurant as equalling one parking space needed. These other service areas where Jungle Boogie didn't actually have people sitting down eating food like a regular, like a regular restaurant, we're seeing at the square footage. So that's kind of how we're seeing a staff determination, I hope that answers your question a little bit.
That's helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council, if I may, just to add on a little bit, um, first wanna know, you know, uh, when it comes to code and definition and understanding, uh, Will's knowledge and skills is second to none, uh, he knows through and through. Uh, I think what he's, uh, without referring to anything specific, council will recall, over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of, uh, private organizations come in and try to utilize space, and unfortunately, it was sort of a take one step forward, make some corrections, take a step back, make a couple corrections, and it, it just turned into this dance that unfortunately didn't result in the use of the space that we all wanted, that we all recognized the lack of a community gathering space, event centers is what we've come up with the title for. Um, we've identified potentially by way of what's currently, uh, open in some of the, uh, in some of the recognized areas in town that could, uh, wo- work for this type of use. Um, and then back to councilmember, uh, Wagner's question, uh, there would certainly be a process that if we get to, like we did in some of those past circumstances, whether related to food, whether related to alcohol, we need to go through the proper permitting and processing or licensing, um, same type of thing. So just wanna, uh, remind council that this is where some of this conversation came from, that we wanna make a process available to people that are gonna do it right, and we wanna help them along the way.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you, thanks for the great, uh, explanation.
Of course.
Any other questions, council?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no questions. Um, I will move to approve the draft of the ordinance amending sections five twenty dot oh seven of the Robinsdale city code relating to, uh, event centers.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, against, say nay. Chase, please, uh, commence with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
And Mayor Sutton?
Aye. Okay. That passes. Well, Will, since we got you, uh, let's talk about the conditional use permit for forty-one thirty Lakeland Avenue North.
You got it, Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna keep on chugging. All righty. All right, well, this is actually gonna be right in relation to what we just discussed. So this is gonna be a condition use permit for forty-one thirty Lakeland Avenue North. So the actual request tonight, this is going to be a condition use permit for specifically an event center, and it's gonna be at the location forty-one thirty Lakeland. And I'll just go to kind of, I'm gonna do a little bit of a background of what this use is, and kind of what to expect in this, uh, application. So the applicant is Flying V Music, and they're also with us in the audience tonight, if you have any questions after the end of my presentation, they'd be more than happy to ask. And this company is kind of a mentorship rehearsal space program to help out at use in the area, kind of experience the art of music. Kind of be introduced to the music, to be introduced to almost learning about it in a setting, and then to also host recitals and kind of almost bands, so that way individuals, family members can come and see them practice, to play, to kind of see what they've learned. Um, they're applying for this condition permits to operate their business out of forty-one thirty Lakeland, and as I previously stated, this was where Jungle Boogie and then Standpoint Event Center were previously operating out of. Staff believe that event center at this location would be compatible, and it would line with comprehensive plan and city code. So again, just to kind of give an idea of where we're looking, what we're envisioning, it's gonna be in the upper portion of the city, kind of in the downtown area, actually not right across the street from us as well. Um, they're hoping to set up shop in the old Jungle Boogie sites. But we also have to look at other portions of this as well. So this is actually also within our transit overlay district, and we actually touched a little bit about these standards with Mr. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Councilmember Greenberg's question. And when we look at any condition use permits being operated in this transit overlay district, we also have to take this review and the standards in code into effect as well. So during the TOD standards, we actually looked primarily at the parking-related requirements for the Flying V Music. So again, just to see right here, we are hoping for this location onto the side here, circled in, that's where they're gonna be setting up shop. And this location currently holds sixty-five parking spaces. So when we're looking at the transit overlay dis- district, we're looking at design standards of the building, greenery, greenery, buffer space, parking. But since this location's already constructed, we're not gonna be looking over at past requirements for building materials and such. So we're gonna look at what we can review tonight, which would be the parking standards. So in this location, they hold sixty-five parking spaces. Per the TOD, retail, service, printing, studio, that is exactly, it's taken from code of how it's read, requires one space for every four hundred square feet of area. So in this district here, we actually see a whole bunch of other businesses, including a barber shop, we also include, um, H&R Block, we also see, um, Broadway Pizza. But Broadway Pizza has a different standard, cause they're seen as food service. Food service within the zoning district and the transit overlay requires one parking space for every eight seats within the restaurant. We're able to look back at their old plans, and we're able to calculate how much parking is totally needed for this entire area. Right now, including Flying V Music and the square footage of their space, they need a total of fifty-six parking spaces. With sixty-five forty present, we'll have a surplus of nine parking spaces. So right now, staff is not seeing an issue with parking with the current occupants of this, um, mall area. And as Mr., uh, Councilmember Wagner looked over, we're actually gonna go through the findings of facts of the condition use permit. Um, I'll just go through each one of these finding facts, because we have to look over each of them to verify, is this use in this CUP compatible with city code? So I'll just go through them really quick, so that way we make sure we've covered them all. So the first requirement of the finding is facts is, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? Staff found out that a, uh, event center type use would be compatible with the B-four zoning district, and then that would subsequent be compatible with the mixed-use commercial district, which we see in the comprehensive plan. We find this to be compatible. The second condition is the geographical area involved. Since we're not doing any modifications to the actual building today or the parking space, we don't see this being applicable to the situation, so we're gonna go past it. The next condition is whether such a use will cause deterioration of the area which is proposed. Pretty much saying, are we gonna see this bringing in blight into the area from such a use? Staff don't see any blight, we don't see any types of deterioration from a music studio or a music type of event center. In the B-two zoning district, we allow music schools already, but we don't allow them with also the added recital area included with it. So that's why we're kind of categorizing this as event center. Since we've already around, uh, music schools in our other areas, loud music and such, we find this would be compatible in this area as well, and we find this consistent with the finding fact. The fourth finding fact is, is this gonna affect the character of the surrounding area? We don't think this is gonna affect the surrounding area, the surrounding area is consistent of other commercial businesses, and it's also within our downtown area where it's gonna have the highest loud, um, noise ordinance area at eighty decibels, I believe, which is the highest of the entire city allowed. They will still need to be consistent with city code in the noise ordinance. So if we get, let's say, consistent complaints from police officers of they're breaking noise ordinance, they're breaking noise ordinance, we would have just regular factors come in saying, here's a violation, you need to comply with city code. That could be either through putting in more sound dampening inside the building, but that's gonna be just relying on our own current noise ordinance for that. So we don't feel this is gonna be an issue. The fifth one is the demonstrated need for such a use. The applicant did go into detail of how they're finding many children, many teens around the area that are hoping to get involved in music, to get out there, to experience playing in a band. We do see a need for such a use in the surrounding areas, we find this will bring in teens not just from Robinsdale, but also from Crystal, New Hope, from other areas to experience music and to kind of see it in a safe place. We think this use would be compatible and would be a, bring a net boom into the city. So we don't find this finding a fact to be detrimental. The sixth one is the road, whether the proposed use would cause odor, dust, flies, vermin, smoke, gas, noise, or vibr- or vibration that would impose hazards to life, property in the neighborhood. As stated with the zoning districts, we already have a noise ordinance already in place. If they break it, we would just remind them, this is the current noise ordinance, if you go past it, you're in violation, and we'll have them responsible to correct it either by putting in now, noise dampeners or other such noise alterations in the city. The seventh one is whether such a use would inherently lead to or encourage disturbing influences to the neighborhood, crime. Um, we don't see this gonna bring any type of negative, um, issues in the city, and we think this Flying V Music would actually benefit us and prevent some of these crimes. Um, and then finally, and I'm not saying there's gonna be any crimes in general, I was just using that as a point. Uh, and the last one of the finding a fact is whether stored equipment or materials would be screened, and whether there would be continuous operation within visible range or surrounding residences. This use is gonna be entirely within the building, we don't expect any exterior storage, we don't expect to see any visible changes other than possibly a signed permit, which they'll have to do through a regu- regular, um, staff administration, but other than that, we don't see an issue with this, and we find this not applicable. Other than that, through all of the findings and facts, we find this condition use permit applicant to be permissible. And as with the other items on tonight, we did have a public hearing that was on the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five planning commission meeting. This notice was put into the newspaper, it was put on the bulletin board, and then we also did hold and close a public hearing. We did have members of the audience step forward and actually say that this would be a very benefit to the city. We had a lot of positive reactions to this ordinance, I mean, to this use, and a lot of positive feedback to Flying V. Um, the planning commission recommended approval of this condition use permit without any added recommendations. And as stated, we are hoping to get a recommendation of approval tonight with two conditions added. This was also included with the planning commission, those conditions would be that the onsite would not exceed eighty-decibel levels. That is the stated amount for the B-four zoning district, we're just hoping to put that within this condition use permit, that way to keep them liable to not break noise ordinance. And the second would be that a city building permit is required prior to any renovations, and a new certificate of occupancy is required, so that way we can make sure that there's proper safety standards, cause if it is event center, we wanna make sure that fire exits, alarms, any such safety factors are being enforced with the, uh, building permit. Uh, with that, I did provide a sample motion there, I'm available for any questions, and the applicants with Flying V are also here with us tonight to answer any of your questions about them or their use.
Excellent. Very thorough, Will, thank you. Uh, council, any questions, comments for, for Will or the- Council, any questions, comments for Will or the Flying V group?
Sure, I guess I'll start.
All right.
Yeah, thanks, Will. I, yeah, I have no problem approving this. I would love to hear from the applicant, though, just a little bit more about the business or the event center, kind of maybe some background on it and what inspired you to bring it into Robbinsdale?
Hi, I'm Jen Van Riper, or as the kids call me, Miss V, and hence the name Flying V. For the past several years, I've been a substitute music teacher, and I take on long call contracts for like maternity leaves, surgeries, that kind of stuff. And two years ago, I was at Edison High School in Minneapolis for about four months covering a maternity leave and met six boys who had an after-school rock band club, and they were playing with absolute trash. There was nowhere they could go any further with what they were using. And so in February, I started a nonprofit and I got the first set of instruments. So they were all playing with stuff that could take them the distance that they wanted to go. Everything I get for the kids is pro-quality. It's a loan until they graduate, and then they can buy it from me. One of the conditions that, you know, when they sign up to get an instrument or amplifier or whatever, they have to make progress towards graduation, and they have to make good choices about their health and well-being. And that includes our Straight Edge focus, which if you're not familiar with Straight Edge, it's a rock and punk movement that abstains from alcohol and drugs. So our location will not be seeking a liquor permit. I don't allow it anywhere onsite. The kids all know this, all my, all the people that come to our regular shows are all on board. You'll see us around with big black Xs drawn on the back of our hands. It's a thing. And so you don't have to worry about, you know, oh, another bar? Nope. We call it a bar, it has Pepsi products. And we're not planning on preparing any food. We just sell packaged snacks like chips and cookies, so that's not something we're doing. We're not making any changes to the building, except we do want to soundproof the shared wall between us and H&R Block.
Sure, sure.
But that's just putting foam up on the wall. So to fund this nonprofit going forward, we host shows, usually heavy metal, but we've had everything from alternative, we've had jazz, we've had folk, we've hosted recitals for the St. Paul Conservatory of the Arts, literally anything you can think of. And I had one of my kids' bands practicing there last week, and I had them crank it up to a ridiculously unreasonable level inside, and I went out and I measured the decibels, and it was at seventy-five. So we will be under the limit. At our old place, we only had street parking, so we are used to bad parking. They are very good at carpooling and everything, so we will not have any issue. Having a parking lot is like a dream come true for us. You've seen our big dumpster out there, we've been cleaning out everything left behind by Standpoint, and we are converting the basement into the student area, their practice area, their recording studio and everything. And the upstairs is going to be our showroom, and we hope to have large crowds. We haven't got the official numbers yet, but we cleaned everything out, we have a stage, speakers, lighting, couches, everything you can think of, and we're still giving out guitars. We purchased our fifty-fourth guitar to give away last week, and we are up to seven complete drum kits that we've given away and one lute. There was a young man who wanted to learn like folk music, and that's what he asked for, and he said, well, can I have a lute instead? I said, yes. It doesn't matter to me what you want, I will find it. And they're in charge of sourcing their own instrument. They have to go find it at Guitar Center or Musical Round or Reverb, and then they come to me, and I haven't had to turn anyone down yet because we've been in the positives since we opened. I'm assuming someday I might have to, but so far, everybody who's asked has gotten exactly what they wanted.
Wow. Yeah, thank you so much. That's a very cool endeavor. I think Robbinsdale could use a little bit more punk and metal, so I'm glad that you are here. I would love to come to an event sometime, but that's, yeah, that's kind of what I was curious about. So thank you so much for the work you're doing and for thinking of Robbinsdale and bringing that here. I think it'll be a really good asset to the community, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll go.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Greenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this sounds so exciting. Thanks for giving us background on what you're doing and what you've been up to, and I'm just excited to have you come to Robbinsdale and support this however we can. So, yeah, it sounds great. Thank you.
Excellent.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Okay, yeah, I was really pumped when I saw this. So I'd say I think the love of music and this opportunity for young people to be involved, and I love the expectation and standards you have for them as well, too. I think anytime you bring a nonprofit center, anyone who is trying to engage young people, it's important to have something that they can latch on to. And, Miss V, thank you for your love of music to bring it to others as well, too. So I'm excited about, yeah, any opportunity we can help or be involved or support you in this endeavor as well, too. I know instruments are not cheap, instruments are, they'll come easily, but I just appreciate your work in that. And, yeah, we'd love to learn more about how we can support you as well, too, as a fellow council. And yes, please invite us out, we need some grunt work done as well, to move some stuff. I'll offer that as well, too.
Our students can book our student rehearsal space for free online, whenever they want, how often they want, and we also have a grand piano, so they can book piano practice time because from where I came from in Minneapolis, not everybody who took lessons had a piano to practice at. And so they, you know, I'd have kids who, you know, like, okay, I'm going to book four PM to five PM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and I'm going to come in and practice my piano, and that's another thing we offer for them.
Do you do a website?
Yes, we do, flyingvmusic.com.
Thank you.
I'll just add, Ms. V, so nice to meet you. Thank you for being here tonight. I think you have some unwavering support from this council, and as a former student musician who also needed to loan an instrument and source practice rooms, I am so happy to hear that you've chosen Robbinsdale to bring your nonprofit. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll echo the same thing, Ms. V. I think this is just amazing, and I'm so excited this is a part of our community now. You know, other council members have said it, but I'll say it, too. Feel free to leverage me or this council. I know we just love to, love to support however, well, I'll speak for myself and let everybody else speak for themselves, too, but I'd be happy to support this in any way that you feel I'm needed. So this is great, I'm excited. Fantastic. All right, is there a motion?
I will move that we approve the draft resolution to allow the use of an event center at forty-one thirty Lakeland Avenue North with the following conditions. A, that the noise on site will not exceed eighty decibels, and B, a city building permit is required prior to any renovations and a new certificate of occupancy is required.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, or if you're not in favor, nay. Chase, please commence with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. All right, that passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all. All right, next is first reading to an ordinance amendment to the R one zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll get this started. Righty. Once again, this is going to be a zoning text amendment tonight. This one is brought forward by staff, hoping to get an amendment to the R one single-family zoning district. So specifically, what are we hoping to do today? We're actually hoping to do an alteration to remove language from city code. Specifically, we want to remove a conditional use for, and I'm going to read exactly how it's read in code, boarding, house or homeboarding, apostrophe, foster children. So I'll give a little bit of background why we're hoping to remove this today. In March of this year, city staff identified an issue with the current zoning code, specifically that grants city authority a review of foster care within the city. This means if anyone wanted to do foster children or be a foster parent within the city, they would need to have a conditional use permit brought forward. This means we would have to hold a public hearing, notify all residents around the area that this individual wants to be a foster parent. We'd have to then bring this to City Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then giving it over to you for final review. We found that this would be a power that goes beyond the municipality, and our own attorney and legal department would rather we remove this as well, to get away from any potential legal issue. This is mostly just cleaning tonight that we're hoping to do, because this is something we don't want to see reviewed, and this is reviewed done by the state level for the foster care department. This isn't something that we should see municipalities, and we don't see this in other municipalities for foster children. So staff defer on this level is, again, as is stated for, this is actually done by the Minnesota Department of Human Services. They already oversee foster care licensing and regulation. The actual conditional use within the R one zoning district states that the two conditions of approval is verifying that they have this license and verifying that they've been notified to any other state agency as well. So our conditional use permit is just already verifying they have licensing through the state. We're just hoping tonight to remove that since any review of an individual being allowed or not allowed to be a foster parent, it's not really city review. So again, Kennedy and Graban did review this, and they strongly recommended removing this provision from code, citing potential legal concerns and risk of creating unintended barriers for foster care providers. It should also be noted that the state legislature in twenty-twenty-four did pass a law prohibiting local units of government from acquiring local rental licenses for state-licensed group homes. I just wanted to also include that with the presentation to say that this is what the state is already doing for group homes. This is something we might want to jump the gun on already and just remove foster care for any potential hiccups in the future. So I just also wanted to really show again, this is what it states in code, and the conditions are requirement conditions to the Minnesota Department of Public Welfare, Public Welfare Manual two-three-three-one-one-zero as adopted, and then a written indication of preliminary pending final. This is what we require if we went through a conditional use permit process. We'd have to make the parents come forward, we'd have to make them give us these licenses, we'd have to make them go through the public hearing, we'd have to get review from Planning Commission, and then your approval. It's just very arduous, and we thought foster care parent providers are already going through the state, they don't need to go through us. Planning Commission did see this, we did hold a public hearing as well for this since it is a zoning text amendment tonight. This notice was put into the newspaper, this was also published and placed on the bulletin board as well. I did not receive any communication from residents about this. The public hearing was opened and it was closed with no comments made by staff, made by the public. The Planning Commission did recommend approval for the removal of this language. And I do have the proposable, the proposed sample motion in front of you. I'm willing to answer any questions tonight.
All right, thanks, Will. Pretty straightforward. Council, any questions?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the draft ordinance amendment to the R one zoning district as recommended by staff or as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, if you're against, nay. Chase, please commence with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. All right. Well, Will. On to the next. First reading for an ordinance amendment to city code section referring to tobacco product shop license.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As again, this is going to be another text amendment we're hoping to include tonight. This is more cleaning brought forward by city staff. We're just hoping to make code more readable, more interpretable, and just more manageable for our staff and then also residents and business owners. So tonight, we're hoping to update our licensing requirements for tobacco and related products in the code section. So what we're specifically hoping to alter is to alter setback requirements between tobacco product shop from one half mile to five hundred feet. And what I mean by this is currently city code states that any two shops, tobacco product shop, this isn't including an individual, a gas station that has cigarettes behind the counter. This is a shop where the main focus, the main revenue source is tobacco products, kookas, vapes. We actually see two of these in the city already, the Smoke Shop and Robbinsdale Tobacco. We're hoping to update the setback language tonight because we ended up finding a situation that made things a little bit more complicated, and I'll go into that right now. So a little bit of background, August of this year, city staff were notified that Vapor Bunker had changed ownership, and the new owners intended to continue operating a tobacco-related business at the same location. So just want to maybe just refine you. Vapor Bunker was based out of the shopping mall right across from City Hall here. They were operating as a tobacco product shop, they had a license already approved through the city, and now the owner wanted to retire, they wanted to have an individual come forward, operate the exact same business as before. Zoning-wise, a tobacco product shop is allowed in the B four district already. Zoning-wise, this is fine, we don't see an issue. License-wise, we did see an issue. According to chapter nine, section, or, yeah, section eleven, one-one-three-two dot thirteen A of the city code, no license, very strong language here. No license shall be granted to a tobacco product shop located within one-half mile, two thousand six hundred forty feet of another such shop as measured from front entrance to front entrance along normal pedestrian routes. That means since this is a brand-new license, we need now to look at this through this lens. So we have to now look at this buffer setback requirement. When we look at the Vapor Bunker location and we look at the current Robbinsdale Smoke Shop on the other side of the downtown area, we were seeing that they're coming out approximately one thousand fifty-six feet. This is way too close, and we'd have to say, even though Vapor Bunker was already operating, this new individual coming forward, we'd have to deny them. We ended up consulting with our legal department to verify if this is something we want to do, we actually want to deny this individual the license, and they gave us the recommendation saying that it would be a legal precedent if we denied them for this setback. We ended up grandfathering their license to allow them to keep operating. But city staff wanted to say, we should update code ordinance anyway so we don't come into this situation as we go forward into the future. So we're proposing five hundred feet tonight because we actually already have such a standard already with cannabis. Cannabis shows that we want five hundred feet between businesses, that way we don't have cannabis, cannabis shops right next to each other. We want to be able to space them out. One-half mile is quite significant. That right there is kind of what we're seeing if we ended up going by the one-half mile ordinance. Pretty much any other tobacco shop is kicked out of the downtown area. Only other area available to them is way up there by Lake Drive, that's where the auto shop is right now for Marathon, or Hy-Vee. We're pretty much saying through our license, we won't allow another tobacco product shop even though state guides us to have two licenses per population. Staff felt we should modify our code to make things more manageable going forward in the future. So this is what we're actually hoping to change within our code language. I struck out what we're trying to change or what we're trying to remove, and I bolded and underlined the new ordinance, which is pretty much saying that no license shall be granted to any person for a tobacco product shop that was within five hundred feet of another tobacco product shop as measured by the shortest distance measured from the front entrance to front entrance. This will make things more manageable, it'll allow for individuals, if tobacco, if the Smoke Shop were, let's say, to close down, and they moved over one shop, it's not going to be a, if they had to lose grandfather rights, we're not going to be saying, you're denied, you're not having another option, and then we'd pretty much be lifting up our shoulders and saying, that's the breaks. So we're hoping to update code tonight to be a little bit more compatible. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for this ordinance change. This was also published in the newspaper. We ended up also posting it on the city's bulletin board for the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. I did not receive any comments from the residents or the public prior to the meeting. The public hearing was opened, it was closed, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance change. As with the other items on tonight's docket, I'm available for questions. As with the other items on tonight's docket, I'm available for questions. I have provided a sample motion down there below and yeah, I'm ready for questions if you have any.
Council, any questions?
I have a question.
Council member Greenberg, go ahead.
Questions, thank you Mayor. So you talked about the requirement around cannabis, there is a minimum requirement based on population, correct?
For cannabis, it is looking over the O S T M saying how many licenses we're allowed to have.
Correct. Is there similar language or is that the same for tobacco?
You know, you did kind of get me in discrepancy there, we allow two licenses for tobacco product shop as given advice from our city clerk. Sherry O'Donnell, she said we allow per code language two, that is similar to what the O C M allows for cannabis as well, so I did kind of interchange in the, but right now we allow for two tobacco product shop licenses. So if we're ended up changing and we ended up not recognizing grandfather rights, it'd be a kind of a little bit of an issue there.
So those two, that's a, a Robbinsdale requirement, like the city is requiring that we have a minimum of two? Or that we allow two? Maximum of two. Maximum.
Maximum.
Okay, yeah, and I just want to clarify because on the cannabis side, it's the state rules that require the minimum of two. And that's why I think we got to that five hundred feet because we basically wouldn't be able to have two. If we, if it was more than that for the most part. And I know there's a maximum of two for our, our, our city language, so that makes sense. And I, and I appreciate that, I guess in my mind. I see where you're coming from as far as making it go from a half mile that is kind of unfeasible, especially given where we're at today. To, but I do feel like five hundred feet is really close for tobacco shops. So I know there's a minimum, there, well, the, the distance today is a thousand fifty six.
Yes.
So would it make sense if it, if, if we're determining that a half mile is too wide because it basically only limits it to one other location in, or two potential locations in the city? Would it make sense to make it more like a thousand fifty six so that we don't have to worry about this specific issue? Without, I, I just feel like a five hundred feet, I know we have that for cannabis and I understand where that's coming from. But that's also based on the minimum from the state requirements, not where the city's coming from.
So. So to be, to be clear, the city is saying max two.
Max.
So whether they're five hundred feet apart, a thousand feet apart or a half mile apart. We can only have two in the city of Robbinsdale, right?
That is accurate, I'm, I'm saying, correct me if I'm, yeah.
That is correct, we're allowed a max of two tobacco product shop licenses.
So, um, if I continue. I, I don't, I, Jason, I don't understand, like, who cares if it's five hundred feet apart or a thousand feet apart? Like, I think the problem is, like, we just don't want a bunch of tobacco shops in, in town, right?
Yeah, Tim, I guess.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, council member Greenberg, I guess to address the question, one of the reasons we want with five hundred feet is to gain a bit of consistency. One of the things we get concerned about with these restrictions by distance is favoring one business over another and when I say business, I think about, you know, specific to landlords in this circumstance. So if a business that's limited by way of distance is permitted a license in a, in a desirable amenity. In this circumstance, tobacco, are we favoring one over another? Part of that, you know, thinking again, you note the tie to O C M. We did mirror some language, some recommended language, some potential language. So we do again, whether it's liquor, tobacco. The higher potency is that becomes online, there are certain things we can limit by way of number, we can limit by way of distance. Some of those distances specific to other amenities like schools, et cetera, that we've discussed, so. The five hundred feet to your question, one, we get concerned about zoning people out and giving preferential treatment. But two, to also mirror some consistency with other licenses that we issue.
Okay, I mean, if that's the case, then I would say maybe just leave it at a half mile. Because I, I, I don't, I don't see any motivation for making it five hundred feet. Like, I'm not, I don't, if there aren't any more tobacco shops in Robbinsdale, I'm fine with that. And we've had this set up and it's stood the test of time and there's no issue there, so. I, I get where you're coming from, but I also feel like that's the way it's always, that's the way we've had it set up, so. If it turns out that they want to move next door and they can't because they're not grandfathered in anymore, then that's the choice.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, council member Greenberg, I guess just to follow up. The, in this circumstance, grandfathering into an existing would be different than a new business coming in. You'll recall that license did come before you because it required council approval. Council was supportive in what we had described, we thought that that, you know, restriction would be and, you know, based in large part in conversation with our attorney, that, you know, we could be found to giving at least preferential treatment, if not worse. And we feel that this five hundred foot designation, you know, if you think in terms of districts within the city that qualify for tobacco, that, that really zones one into the downtown area and zones everybody else out.
And so even though that's the way that it's been for however long, you see that as being problematic down the road? Because you believe it gives preferential treatment or from a legal standpoint, our lawyers feel that way?
Sir Mayor, council, council member Greenberg, we do. The, the challenge with our code saying that within certain areas that we define, we're going to allow up to two. But then essentially with another set of our rules saying, well, actually it can only be one.
Okay.
There's some inconsistency there.
Okay. No, I appreciate that and, and to some extent that does change how I think about it. Again, I'm thinking, you know, when I read this, it was like, well, the reason why it's five hundred feet is very specific and it's because there's a minimum that's set. That's two, so if we made it much more than that, we couldn't really even have two. And that is against state, the state O C M rules. So this is different than that and so it gave me pause, but I think that that is a reasonable explanation to help clarify that for me.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll.
Council member Wagner, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, council member Greenberg, that's, I think a good. Well, yeah, what you did was a good way to kind of flush out the discussion and got me thinking about it too because, yeah, I definitely don't want to be, when we can avoid it, I don't want to be reactive to things and in this case it does feel fairly reactive. But I think the justification, as you rightfully talked out with everybody, I think kind of eases my concerns to a large degree as well. But, but yeah, I was just kind of, it seemed a little odd for this kind of thing. But I do agree with staff's assessment and think that it's a reasonable change to how we do things right now.
Alright, any other questions, council?
Not a question, but I do have just a comment for Will, I know you've presented quite a few items on the agenda for us tonight and I know you've got one more. Just want to say thanks for all of the work that you've done to, as you said, do some housekeeping and clean up. Some of these text amendments in the code, so just want to appreciate your effort there.
Oh, thank you.
I concur.
Yeah.
You've done a good job. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, how about a? Motion to approve the proposed draft resolution as presented by staff?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, thank you, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye or nay and Chase, please. See with the roll call vote.
Council member Blackledge.
Aye.
Council member Greenberg.
Aye.
Council member Parisian.
Aye.
Council member Wagner.
Aye.
And Mayor Sutton.
Aye, alright. That passes. Alright, Will, you've been doing a great job so far.
Thank you.
I think we got one more here, an abatement to thirty nine nineteen West Broadway.
I'll pull that up now. Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, this is a abatement to thirty nine nineteen West Broadway. And just to kind of give a background to any council member, I don't know if you've actually had the pleasure of going through an abatement or not. It's usually when council will actually revoke and actually through a resolution on an item to actually come in and actually deal with the situation they deem could be hazardous to the area. Staff have been undertaking efforts as well as planning, I also do code enforcement for the city. And we have been taking efforts to bait a property maintenance at the location of thirty nine nineteen West Broadway. That has continued since twenty twenty four. The violation since yesterday still has not been revoked at this time and staff are pursuing an abatement action since the cost to abate the situation is more reasonable than the continued citation fees. The violation needing abatement is a concern to a roof of the actual structure. This is a B one property with, it is now and it's not, I wouldn't say abandoned, but there's just no individual staying there and there's no business being undertaken. The roof of the structure in the rear yard has a hole in it. I have received multiple complaints from neighbors saying that this hole is having squirrels, rodents, vermin going in and out. And they say that that is a nuisance. Our city code would agree and say that this would be considered a rodent harborage as well as a property maintenance code. We are hoping through code enforcement to be able to have the property owner absolve the violation. But since we're now going into November of twenty twenty five, we're hoping to do an abatement to make things more streamlined and not to put more pressure onto the property owner. So kind of give you an idea of where the location is, I did circle in and read the area, it's going to be down on West Broadway. And it's going to be right there at thirty nine nineteen. So this is an actual photo from myself, this is, and you can actually see down below the timestamp of November twenty second, twenty twenty four. You can see up top there through kind of the branches of an opening where the roof allows for individuals, squirrels to be able to get in and out. Staff have been trying to work with the property owner and we've been very lenient and he's been working hard too, that must be stated. That the property owner has made a lot of efforts, this was not the only co enforcement violation for this property. There was windows with chipped paint, there was cracks in the foundation and there was rotting boards. He did a lot of work, he actually ended up fixing a lot of portions, that must be recognized and staff, co enforcement really appreciates when residents work with them, we're not, I really don't try and punish people. I want to work with them so that way co enforcement is completed as fast as possible and as easy as possible with the resident. But unfortunately, we're now in November third, twenty twenty five and this photo I took yesterday. It's still there and at the same time, I want to work with homeowners, I also need to be conscious of complaints from other residents as well. Because if I keep ignoring them saying, we're working on it, we're working on it. It, it goes on deaf ears and it shows that the city is kind of looking at our code and saying, we won't enforce it. A notification of abatement was posted on the property and mailed to the owner, John and Virginia Kobe at their address listed with Hennepin County, that was sent off to them on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. To date, I have not received any response to this notice. When I sent out notices, I actually look at the taxpayer information from Hennepin County itself. It lists me of who the taxpayer is and the taxpayer address. I utilized that address to send out my notice, which I've done before with the co enforcement violations. I also went out and I physically posted with tape and then I'll show you right here. That I took a photograph of the abatement and I put it there as well, it's showing down there that I posted it on the door, September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I, I haven't heard any word from him. Per section, I will actually go back, I had some notes written somewhere. Here we go, sorry, I actually, in the PowerPoint presentation, I had some notes written down and just went back so I can make sure I can read them. The notice, this was a vid, initially started in June of twenty twenty four. I ended up sending out co enforcement letters to the individual who was very receptive of them. He ended up getting the letters, understood the assignment and ended up working with us. But he had his own personal matters that ended up preventing him to complete work. City staff know that everyone has troubles in life, we all get into situations that are rough. Co enforcement in the city of Robbinsdale is not out to punish. We are not out to make a quick buck, we're not out to make things more difficult, we want to work with residents and when we they give us their word, they're working on it, we take it. So he ended up saying on July second that, I'll work on this, I'll get you an actual plan on July fifth of twenty twenty four. That came by, I didn't get any notification further and then we ended up fast forwarding to July thirtieth, I sent out the final notice. So when co enforcement sends out letters, I send out initial first warning violation. I put the code language on the letter, I take a photograph, I circled the area and then I timestamped the photo saying, you're in violation. Here's the code section, here's verification of why I think you're in violation, a photo. If I don't hear anything, two weeks, ten days go by, I send out a final notice. For this individual, since he was in contact with me, I extended that, I didn't want to put a burden on him. So then I send it out near the end of month of July, because I haven't heard anything. Once I get to the final notice page of a co enforcement violation, I will send out a citation notice. A citation notice will actually take a fiscal fee that we have through city code and assess it to the property once we actually be able through the finance department. I ended up sending out that citation and he ended up working on the property. It wasn't just the code, the squirrel, he ended up working on a lot of other portions of the property and fixed it up. So I worked with them, put them a little bit longer, but eventually he stated he had some issues out of state he had to take care of. And eventually I didn't hear any more word back, I was kind of forced to start submitting citations to the property. When I send a citation that has a fee associated, if a full month goes by and the violation hasn't been corrected. I double the fee, I send a new notice, new, trying to get correspondence with them. If I haven't heard any correspondence, once a citation is sent out to them, in ten days, I'll take the citation. I'll go over to finance department and they'll assess it to the actual property taxes. I keep doubling and doubling and doubling and we're right now at the fifth citation. The citation, if I process it, I have not processed it yet, but if I process it, it'd be sixteen hundred dollars. Staff feels this is more than to fix the actual hole. We feel like this would be more punishment than help, we don't want to hit people with citation fees over and over. And we felt, let's do an abatement, let's notify them so we can give them one last chance to fix the issue. And then we'll hire a contractor at low cost, there wouldn't be any administrative fees, we were not going to tack on any legal fees. We're not going to tack on any other, that, we're just going to have the contractor go out there, fix the roof and the violation. And that way we can close it out so we don't have to keep on harassing him, but also the neighbors. The violation is fixed as well, because we want to work with them both, so. This citation, this abatement is tonight, is to make a low cost productive way to get through co enforcement without continuing citations in what staff feels is unneeded. So that is the crux of the abatement that I'm hoping to have go forward tonight. And as I stated before, we did notify them of the abatement through state statute of ten days, fourteen days actually per city code prior to the actual hearing, that was September thirtieth. I haven't gotten any word from him once those letters got out and I also put it on the physical building as well so that they can hopefully see it. I also wanted to talk about payments, per city code section two, two thousand twenty one dot oh one city na- city staff will need to document all costs involved with administrative, legal, cleanup, storage and or disposal of any property. We're not throwing away any property, we're not going to be tacking on legal, we're not going to be talking about any more admin. We solely want to have a contractor go out there, fix the hole and then close out the citation. After that time, the owner of the premise upon which the nuisance is abated, they will get a bill from the city because unfortunately we, we would have to bill them. And through that bill, if And through that bill, if they can't pay it due to the date, at the due date, this will be done by the finance department. It will be put as a lien against the property, and the amount shall be collected as a special assessment in the manner provided by Minnesota statutes, chapter four twenty-nine. This is taken directly from our code of abatement process. So staff recommend approving the abatement tonight and ordering the repair of the building at thirty-nine nineteen West Broadway. Staff included a sample motion below. I am available for any questions if you have any at this time.
Yeah. Mayor, I have a question, if that's alright?
Please. Governor Wagner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Will, once again. When the roof's repaired, are they, if I saw in the memo, there was talk of like a rodent hole, so would like a nest be cleared if the contractor finds one? Or how do they, how do you deal with that, if at all?
We would have to see what we're going to be looking at when we get up there. We're obviously not going to trap rodents within the home. That would end up killing them and starving them, anything like that, so we'd probably look at the contractor. They've done this before with contractors in the past, when they would come up and do repairs to the abatements. They'd either seal it up to make sure. They would also verify, is there any of the rodents? If you found out that it's a very severe rodent infestation, we would have to kind of look back at that again and probably get some more advice from city staff, even legal, of how to best proceed. Legal department, we did check in with this abatement with them to verify, is this something legally we can come onto the property and physically repair the hole? They stated yes. They did highly recommend continual contact with the property owner to get permission, meaning I'd like them to sign it. So after this meeting, per your discretion, your vote, I'm going to keep trying to contact them, saying, "Please give us permission to come on the property." We don't want to keep citing you. We don't want to keep billing you. Let's just fix the problem, and then let's just cut the violation so that way it can be co-compliant. But if he does find rodents, anything in there, a very severe infestation, we would probably have to relook at the situation to determine what would be the next best option.
Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, I was, yeah, just curious, because it seemed like that was the, maybe the impetus for wanting to fix it and among other reasons. So I just was curious about that. So thank you again. And I'm happy to support this.
Other questions, Council?
I'll just make a comment, just to appreciate the really, the thorough explanation of the situation of what abatement is and the background of this specific property. So thanks so much for all the diligence on that, and I would support it as well.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Blackledge, do you have something?
Yeah, I have something real quick. I just want to say thank you for, yeah, the manner in which you approach this. I think it's just a reminder of you're humanizing people and recognizing things that come up, and just to repeat, like, just the time period in which it's happened, and take the time to really assess and make sure that people can address things. So I do appreciate the human quality around this. Yeah, we don't want to continue to tax people and burden them if we can help out. So I do appreciate hearing that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah? Comments? I mean, put you on the spot. Okay.
I will make a.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, did you have something to add?
I did, actually. I just, I wanted to make a comment, and I don't know if this is appropriate for maybe a work session or here, but I do appreciate that people fall on hard times and certain things come up, but I do know the backstory on this particular property. I had also heard from a resident back in the spring about this rodent problem, and here it is, November fourth, and it's, you know, we're moving to the abatement process. I would like to see us, and maybe this is me underappreciating, and I don't want to extend the meeting side with, like a discussion, like I said, we could take this into a work session, but I would like to understand just how often we are, you know, kind of given these second, third, fourth chances, and maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit. I hear the compassion, Will, and I appreciate that the city has compassion, and we should have compassion, but at the same time, we have to care for our residents too. And when residents are complaining because it's an eyesore, or there's a rodent's nest, or, you know, there was awnings that were ripped just in front of a business here this summer, right on Main Street. And I know it's a little bit of a game, because you send the first letter, and it's like, okay, I'm going to ignore that, then they're going to follow up with the, you know, okay, I really mean it letter, you know, and I just, I don't know. It's, it gets, it's a little bit of a thorn in my side as I walk around the city and I see a boarded-up window on a business, and that's been there for years, you know. It's just like, stuff like that starts to, starts to add up, and, you know, we've got a wonderful community here, and we've got a beautiful city, and, you know, we've got residents that really care about what their places look like, and we've got residents that maybe aren't as invested, but I think we need to hold them accountable. So taking special circumstances, of course, into mind, especially when circumstances are drastic. But I'd like to see us just, you know, with the three-strike rule, something we can employ. I don't know what it is, but I just, I want to see some of the stuff get cleaned up a little bit quicker. So that's my comment. Sorry. Taking so much time. So, Tim, is that something we talk about at a later time, or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, we'd be happy to bring back maybe a bigger swath of examples to kind of walk through. I think these are so nuanced. As Will mentioned, this circumstance certainly had a set of challenges we walked through. Some successful, some not so much. Staff shares your desire to continue to address code. I would want council's full backing if we were going to be more heavy in our approach, because of course that comes with responses from neighbors as well. So we ultimately certainly be happy to bring that back to a work session in the future.
Good. And I fully admit, that is me underappreciating all that goes into this, so just getting a reaction at the moment, but more education's better. So, thank you, Tim. Yes, I'm done. If somebody wants to make a motion, or if there's more comments?
I'll just make one more comment really quick. I think it's worth a discussion in a work session, just because it's not so much around the heavy-handedness of it, or, you know, to get a resolution. I think it's more about timeliness, like, we can have the same approach, just, you know, having a faster timeline on it. So if they're, again, all these situations are sort of unique, but like, finding a way that we have rules, and I think this is why it warrants a discussion, is like, what would, what would those parameters be? But like, maybe waiting, you know, like, taking it years is too long, but if we could do it, you know, shorter than that, again, I know there's a lot of things at play in this one. But, you know, what are the criteria, and like, how do we take a compassionate way of doing it, but also maybe speeding it up? Sorry, that got long-winded, but I look forward to a discussion and a work session. And I guess with that, I can make a motion.
Thank you.
So, sorry, just.
Motion to waive the reading.
Yeah, waive the reading.
Of the adoption of the resolution?
Yeah, so moved. Thank you. Second.
All those in favor by saying aye, all those opposed say no or nay. Chase, please commence with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
And Mayor Sutton.
Aye. Alright. Thanks, Will. Lot of work tonight, and well, well done. Good job on all those presentations.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to other business, voucher request pending approval for dispersment. Anything to discuss there?
I have one question, if that's okay?
Yes, Councilmember Greenberg, go ahead.
So I noticed one larger distribution on there with regards to the PUPS facility in Maple Grove. And it, I don't know if we've discussed it. It didn't ring a bell, so I'm just wondering, can you give a little more background on what that was? Is that, did we, I don't remember voting on that, but maybe we did, and I'm just like drawing a blank.
Couple meetings ago.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Greenberg, and just briefly, going back a couple of years, PD has been a part of, PUPS is the acronym, Pets Under Police Supervision, for those at home. The facility that currently operates out of Maple Grove is between disrepair and dilapidated, and size-wise doesn't accommodate all the cities that participate. We operate through a JPA under this PUPS facility, and we've, over the last, like I say, two years, gone through processes, looking through some nonprofits, humane societies, et cetera, as to what we can do with lost pets. We've gone as far as St. Paul. We've gone further west, you know, considering costs by way of travel and accommodation, et cetera. While, you know, certainly wanting to be respectful of our furry friends when they're recovered. We want them to have a place to go to. We even at one point looked at whether or not a corner in the police department, or even the new public works facility, could accommodate for something like this. So finally, getting to a point of exhausting all of our options, we agreed on with a handful of other communities. The issuance that you're referring to, I believe, is thirty percent. This formal action, as Councilmember Wagner noted, was approved by council here a couple of weeks ago, so payment for that first step was due by, I believe, end of November.
Okay. Sorry, and that's on me. I just, I appreciate the clarification. It was a big number, so I just wanted to reiterate. So thanks. And with that, I'll, is there anything else? With that, I'll make a motion to approve dispersment request for the period ending November fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose, no, or nay. Chase, please commence with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
And Mayor Sutton.
Aye. Okay, bills are paid. Thank you. Next on the agenda is administrative reports.
I'll start with this one tonight. See, I just wanted to give, since we're approaching the end of yard waste season, just an update about yard waste. So we're in November, and yard waste will continue through the, normal yard waste will continue through the end of November, so specifically November twenty-eighth, I believe, is the last Friday of the month that it'll go through. But for this year, Republic is also offering a citywide yard waste pickup in connection with the city, so we're sponsoring together, I guess. But that would be the first week of December, so December first through the fifth, depending on the day of the week, you have pickup. So it's for two thousand twenty-five. Let's see. Will, during the citywide cleanup, households may set out up to twenty-five compostable paper bags in addition to their yard waste bin, or bins if they have more than one of those. So that is a big help. I would say if residents anticipate to have more than that, then they would want to do some other options for getting rid of their yard waste if they aren't planning to store it in their garage or something like that. So make sure to plan ahead if you do anticipate to have more than that. This also is like every other yard waste season. If there's, you know, weather that's impacting the service, that also goes hand in hand with this. Since we are pushing it out later, it could be a concern, but past first weeks of December look promising when you look back, you know, several decades, or several years. So hoping that we have good weather for that first week for the extra bags. And then I just wanted to note that this information is already on our website, but we'll also send out a postcard that details all the information. And then if there is inclement weather that last week, that will be noticed on our website too. So make sure to check there, just to make sure you can get the service for your residents. So that is all I have for myself this week.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll jump in with a few things. I'll start with, I'm sure, Council also known on, sharing my condolences to the family of Marjorie Johnson. Both as somebody who's passionate about the city of Robbinsdale, and as a self-described state fairer silly, Ms. Johnson was certainly quite the lady, and so my condolences to her family. I want to give my big thanks to Will. Some was housekeeping items, some were by way of application, but big good night for community development. So thanks to all the work that went into that tonight. I want to share out, Councilmember Parisian noted, coming online soon, a chartering station down in LVT, so you've seen some components of the install occurring. A bit of time until it's actually hooked up, but we look forward to that. We'll certainly broadcast that out here in the coming weeks. Similarly, Manor Park, as we continue to update the facility down there at the playground, we'll be sure to share those updates out. Do you want to note that next week, City Hall will be closed in observance of, on Veterans Day. That's Tuesday, the eleventh. And by way of, City Council will meet the following Wednesday, the twelfth. Also want to share, as we're looking towards the end of the year, December twelfth, City Council hosts the annual lighting of the holiday tree prior to the City Council meeting, and then later that night, of course, some of the marquee council actions with the truth in taxation and setting of utility rates. So we'll continue to share that all through communications channels. A little bit of work to be done yet, but we're closing out the end of the year here.
Excellent. Thanks, Tim. Okay, well, let's move on to Council General Communications. Who would like to go first?
We'll switch it up.
Alright, like it. Councilmember Blackledge?
Yeah, I'll be real brief. Just want to say thanks again for everybody's time today. Really appreciate all the work and effort that goes into a lot of preparation, preparing information, and just being able to read that. Also condolences as well, too. I know as we think about people's passing and the legacy they leave behind, one that I think I'm continuing to learn more and more about as I read and learn about the kind of person she was as well, too. And then, as always, just remember to say hi to your neighbors, meet and greet as we transition to this fall weather. So, thank you all.
Well put. I too share my condolences with the family and friends of Marjorie Johnson, just an institution in Robbinsdale, and really an outstanding community member and represented us in so many great ways. So, so yeah, I want to call that out. I also want to say thanks to city staff and all the work that went behind getting the additional yard waste collection. Not only the number of bags, but also the later date. I've talked to a number of residents who are really excited about that, and I know that that was not, you know, that was not just an easy thing. And so I'm really glad we were able to stick on that and, or continue discussions on that and find a resolution. So thank you so much for all that hard work. And then I will just throw out something that's going on in the community. On November tenth and December eighth, from nine AM to noon, there's free senior tech support station, support sessions through Robbinsdale Recreation. So you can log on to the website and register for those, but I don't think that all the residents know of all the things that we're doing, so I just wanted to call some attention to that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Parisian, do you want to go?
Thank you, yes. I would also like to extend my condolences to the family of Marjorie Johnson. A few years back, at the meet and greet before becoming elected, I held a table with sort of like an interactive voting activity and invited the community to place little beads into a box and place their vote for notable women in Robbinsdale, and Marjorie Johnson won that vote by a landslide. So I wanted to share that, that small anecdote. Also, I wanted to highlight the Blue Line Extension Cultural Placemaking Event at Elam that happened a couple of weeks ago. The next event is coming up a couple of weeks from now, on November nineteenth, which is a Wednesday evening, again at Elam Church. Starts at five PM, and it goes until about seven thirty. If you are interested in seeing some of the artist renderings of, that were presented at that event a couple of weeks ago, those can be found at website, engage.mendcollaborative.com/BlueLinePlaceKeeping, all one word. If you want to not write down that website, you can look back into the city's Facebook posts from a few weeks ago. They have a link to that site as well. So that's it from me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for all those sentiments and updates. Yeah, I echo the condolences shared. I wanted to also just extend a thank you to any Robbinsdale residents that are helping in the variety of elections happening around us. I know a couple of my neighbors go to other cities to help out when needed, so thank you for anybody volunteering for that, and especially when they volunteer during our elections as well. It's important work. And then the Manor Park Playground, I drove past it on the way here. It looks fantastic. I mean, it's very impressive. It's like state-of-the-art playground technology or something. It's pretty cool. It's pretty fun. So I just want to thank, again, the Parks Department, the commission staff, and I suppose any contractors working on that to getting that up and a usable new asset for.
um, and I suppose any contractors working on that to getting that up and um, a usable new asset for, for um, Robbinsdale kids, I think it's awesome, so thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, I'll uh, I'll round this out here. Um, again, thanks to staff for uh, for your help with the leaves. I know this is, uh, we're doing it for this year and this year alone, but uh, it was great to answer all um, that residents were concerned and, and uh, we really appreciate the work you, you put in there. Also, great job on the presentations tonight, um, uh, really, uh, by all staff members who participated. Uh, definitely condolences out to Marjorie Johnson. Uh, she was a neighbor, she was a uh, a legacy here in Robbinsdale and it's, it's interesting because, you know, Mia, you brought up the beads that went in the box and, you know, we just went through the exercise of going through park renaming and, and all the different names and I, Marjorie's name was dominant on that list and, and I've even con- continued to get people now that she's passed to, to vote, uh, vote her in. So it's, it's just, it just goes to show how much uh, she mattered to this community. And uh, I hope her family is listening and, and uh, appreciates that and I, and I know they do. So uh, with that, I've got nothing else. Um, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all those opposed say no or nay. Chase, roll call, please.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Councilmember Wagner?
Aye.
And Mayor Sutton?
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Be well, everybody.